Please join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do not have any condolences for any veterans this evening, but please join me in a moment of silence for all of our Bridgewater veterans and their families who have passed. Thank you. Okay, we'll begin with Item A, approval of minutes from previous meetings. Do I have a motion for approval and discussion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B, announcements from the President. I don't have anything lengthy here, but I did want to mention, because there is a lot of discussion regarding a number of items, MBTA obviously, which our town manager will discuss later in his report, and then also the item for the TIF ordinance, which I'll ask Council Strickles to give us an update on that specifically later on, but just to prepare people for any sort of citizen comments this evening. We do plan on referring that back to committee to do some more diligence, if that is the will of the council. We'll be putting that up for a vote later on tonight, so if that's the will of the council, we are going to be looking to send that back to committee, and that is a request of those committee members. So just wanted to begin with that, to prepare people for any comments that they may make this evening. We obviously welcome any and all comments, but just wanted to let you know ahead of time. That's all that I have for announcements. We do not have any proclamations, so we'll move into citizen open forum. Due to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law requirements, discussions will not take place during public comment periods. If appropriate responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. Anyone may comment this time, up to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, at Ivaldi Boxwood Lane. As most of us who live in Bridgewater know, Comcast is currently the major provider of wired broadband service to our town. Although there may be a small number of other wireless or satellite options, Comcast basically has had a monopoly on this service in our town for many years. I had a recent conversation with a Verizon tech on my street about the status of their Fios product in our town. For those who don't know what Fios is, it's a state-of-the-art, complete fiber optic network that has unlimited broadband speeds and close to 100% reliability and availability. What the tech told me was rather disturbing. First, he mentioned that basically every town around Bridgewater already has Fios, including Brockton, West and East Bridgewater, Rainham, Middleborough, Easton, Halifax, and Lakeville. When asked why Bridgewater doesn't have it, he said the following: "Ten years ago, Verizon was willing, able, and ready to complete the Fios rollout in Bridgewater. However, the town management at that time put unreasonable requirements into the negotiation, such as giving every employee a free cellphone. As a result, Verizon walked away from the negotiation, and nothing has been done since." Whether this is true or not, the reality is that the citizens of Bridgewater have been deprived of the benefits of a free market by being limited to one primary provider, that being Comcast. As most residents know, Comcast is notorious for raising rates without providing any additional value to its customers. Bridgewater citizens should have a choice of more options, like other towns around us do. I encourage this body, as well as our new town manager, to get back to the table with Verizon to complete the rollout of this high-speed broadband network to our residents. I believe the college and the prison would also benefit from this as well. Changing subjects, several months ago, you all were involved in a discussion on the section of the charter that really gets any attention, that being Section 2.7, Measures, Emergency Measures and Charter Objections. The discussion, as I recall, mainly centered on an objection raised by a council member and whether it was valid due to the semantics around whether it was raised on the first occasion on the adoption of the measure. The charter verbiage related to this is Section 2.7B. I'd like to point out some additional verbiage included in the last portion of that charter section that never got discussed. It reads as follows: "Before taking a vote on any measure, the council president or councilor acting as the presiding officer shall ask if there is a charter objection to that measure." The issue, as I see it, is that this is not happening, and as a result, I believe this body is out of compliance with the charter. I suggest, Mr. President, that you and the other councilors review this with our legal counsel and determine a path forward to bring yourselves into alignment with the charter. And lastly, I want to commend the members of the Rules and Procedures Committee, Councilors McGrath, Kennedy, and Lindy, for taking action on several of the charter recommendations made by the Charter Review Committee five years ago. Other than the four recommendations brought forward by Councilors Gallagher and George back in 2021, which are now being reviewed at the state legislature, there are many other key recommendations that were simply voted against or tabled in recent years by prior Rules and Procedures members and never brought back to the council. I hope that you all vote to move these forward tonight, and I encourage the Rules and Procedures Committee to continue bringing other recommendations forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Good evening, Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street. I know you're going to be sending the TIF back to committee, but I just have, you know, some comments on it. As a resident, I don't feel that this should be allowed. While it may not cost the town anything, as people put it, it does cost with the lack of taxes at the immediate timeframe, especially now when we need the income. No one has shown, at least to me, anything convincing information to show why this should be allowed and how it brings major finance to our town by allowing it. What do we get out of it? How is it going to help anybody but the developer? So I want to know if somebody could convince me what the financial end of this is. And I also feel anybody who buys a piece of property should already know what the zoning is, what's allowed, what's not allowed, and what the terrain is, and in this case, there was no TIF to begin with. A developer can't come in, buy something, and this has happened before, and expect the town to change the zoning, change our way of doing things. Slight variances here and there, that's fine, but there are a lot of developers requesting the town to change their zoning, and that should not be allowed. You buy a piece of property, you know what's allowed, plan accordingly. Don't ask the town to change things and add things. So I'm glad that's going back to committee. The other question I have, I guess, would be for maybe the town manager. Can we get the actual figures of what Bridgewater gets financially from the state for the university, the MBTA, and the prison? Do we get anything? Taxes, any money at all? How much water are they actually using? I know this might have been posted in the past, but I don't recall, and it wouldn't hurt to put it back out there, because I know a lot of people would like to see it. Does it cost the town to have, you know, what does it cost the town for emergency and police services? The actual figures, even if it's been posted before. We are a town that has a university, correctional institute, and train station. I don't consider us a college town, like everybody calls us. Why not call us a train town? A correctional institute town, AKA prison town? Say we're a college town. We're not a college town. We're a town that happens to have those three things in it. And we are a town that supports three state agencies, and we need to get more from the state, and I wish somebody would try to push for that. And we can't afford to keep increasing density. We can't go beyond 15 units. That is too much as it is. It's not going to give us any more open space, water, and water is concern. It will put more strain on our resources, never mind schools. So I really would like to see that, if it has to do anything, stay at 15, but don't go any further. If it can go less, great, but I don't think so. So I'd like to get an answer for those figures soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Learned you can do this the last time, but, oh, because it's maxed out. James Wall, 60 Crescent Street. Wanted to start off just by expressing support for a couple of things on the agenda tonight. I saw an appointment for Lori Keen, who's a close, you know, family friend, as well as, you know, of course, a great asset to the town over many years in her career, so a big supporter of her appointment. Also wanted to express support for ordinance number three, to extend the period for a citizen objection from 10 days to 30. I think that's really, really essential, especially in today's environment, where I think a lot of residents are watching this probably online a few days later and not necessarily in the moment, like when we used to have a town hall. I think that will help us adapt. And then also just wanted to support Order 14, the transfer order to the congregational church. I'm not a member, but I think it's such an important historical landmark in our town, including the windows, and I'm really glad that we're preserving those. And just wanted to express some gratitude to everyone who's made the CPA possible, because I really think it's one of the best things that the town has done. A couple other notes. I know this isn't on the agenda tonight, but there's been a lot of back and forth about the, you know, the MBTA community's zoning, of course. I understand there are technical requirements and density and all that. I'm not really here to dispute that. But I do think, you know, there's a concern that I've heard from other residents and share myself of why the district itself is so large. So I think that's what really jumps out to people, you know, is that we're giving 75 acres when we're required to have 50. We're giving about 50% more than we want to, and I just haven't heard a clear expression of why. I think there's a lot of reasons not to, you know. I think not a lot of people in town agree on one thing anymore, but one thing I think most people you talk to say is we've built too much and we keep building too much. Our schools are underfunded, we can't give the children the education they deserve, we're, you know, running out of water. In the July water presentation, I think it said by seven years from now, half of our water budget will just be paying off the debt to build what we need to meet our demand. I mean, we're really overstretched, and I don't see a compelling reason why we should give more than we have to. So, you know, please consider amending that overlay. I think there's probably a way we could just reduce that overlay to be in compliance without kind of giving too much. And then finally, one note. Wanted to send, just reference some materials I shared with you all earlier this evening about tree ordinances and Braintree and Mashpee. I know that's been something that's been on the agenda throughout the summer, and I think these are really great examples. These towns or cities both restrict removing trees and vegetation from the setback line, where, you know, a property owner can't build anyway. This is something Bridgewater did in the senior village housing district, and I think it's a fantastic addition and should be scaled to the town. As we kind of increase density, you know, we've done a lot of overlays and zoning changes, increasing density, increasing the amount of properties that can be built on a lot. Those buffers are going to be more and more important, you know, being able to protect the privacy, sound buffer, all of that between our neighbors. So I think it's really compelling, and I hope you'll consider it and consider including that in a tree ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come up and speak? Okay, thank you for speaking. There'll be another period at the end of the meeting. We will now move on to Item E, appointments. First up is Lori Keen for the Conservation Commission. This is for a three-year appointment. Do I have a motion for approval and a second for discussion?
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Thank you. That was far, three minutes. Thank you. Your time's up. Any discussion on this appointment? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, Item B, we have Philip Nichols. This is for appointment to the DEIB Committee. This is a one-year appointment. Do I have a motion for approval and a second?
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item?
Yes, I just wanted to note for the record, we do not have a resume on file for this. I think we should try to ultimately get our house in order. We've talked about this a number of times, and I had a discussion with the town manager prior to the meeting tonight about possibly coming up with a good form that will act as a resume. I, when you apply for a job, you submit a resume. When you want to volunteer for something, I think we should see a resume before we vote on something. Just, I know it goes through Citizen Advisory Committee, but I truly think that we should see resumes of some kind.
Thank you. Any further comment?
I'm going to echo Council Lindy's concern over the resumes. I brought that up previously. I think we should have resumes for everyone. That puts everything forward in front of us. I'm also not going to be in favor of this one, is the same reason I was not in favor of the previous ones we appointed. I don't find a need for this committee. And from viewing their current meetings that they've had, they themselves are also searching for a reason to exist or things to do, unlike, say, the Finance Committee and a number of other committees we have in town that have a set job role, that things go before them for a specific reason. So it just appears to be a public outreach committee that's sanctioned by the town from the discussions and my interpretation of it, so I'm just not going to be in favor of this to support more people in that committee.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Just to clarify, if I could, through you to Councilor Kennedy.
Sure.
So we're going to deny a citizen the opportunity to volunteer for a committee because you don't agree with the committee?
Yep, I'm going to continue to vote in the same way, in the manner that I have on the previous members.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Sure.
I'm not voting against the person, I'm voting against the process of not having a resume. I'm not, not in favor of the committee or the person. I just want to make that clear, like I have been for close to a year.
Certainly.
It just says in the paperwork regarding this candidate that, you know, he did not provide the resume, but he did put in his background on the application, and that is provided to us. Again, we had this discussion before. Not everyone has resumes, especially, you know, guys that may work in the, people that may work in the trade, and just might not have a physical resume put together with their background. So I don't think that should be a criteria for accepting a nomination or not, but that's just my two cents.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I also share concerns about not having a resume, and I looked at the admin code, and this committee does mention specific training in regard to DEIB, so I would also like to see a resume. So I was disappointed in that as well. Council Strickles?
I think I can add a little bit, as someone who has been involved quite a bit with the NAACP, you've received quite a bit of training when you're involved with that organization, so that directly goes with DIB training and procedures.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, why don't we do a roll call on this one, because there seems to be a little back and forth, please.
Mr. Kennedy?
No.
Ms. Ellenberg?
No.
Ms. Strickles?
Yes.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Loretty?
No.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
And Mr. Lindy?
No.
Four to four.
Fails.
Fails.
Okay, we'll move on to hearings. Item A, Petition P. 226-001, petition for National Grid and Verizon, New England, Inc., joint or identical poll location at 815 Bedford Street. Petitioner, thank you for coming up. I'm going to open the public hearing now. It is 7:18 PM. This hearing has been duly advertised in the July 29, 2025 enterprise. Representative, would you like to speak on the behalf of the application, or the petition, rather?
Yeah, I'm Jared from 100 East Ashland Street, representing National Grid. Need a midspan poll put in between 65 and 66. Those polls are both occupied, and I believe there's a conflict with lot lines, but we're putting that in to serve as a customer.
Thank you. Are there any questions from councilors for petitioner while he's up there? Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll ask if there's any general questions from the public. Okay, seeing none. Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak in favor? Seeing none. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak in opposition? Seeing none. And again, I already asked councilors, because petitioner's up here, but do we have any other questions? Okay. I will now close the hearing. It is 7:19, and I'll ask for a motion for approval and a second.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this, councilors? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to Order OFY 26-008, loan authorization for Phase II wastewater treatment facility. This is for the preliminary design and engineering of the phosphorus removal upgrade project. This hearing has been advertised in the July 29, 2025 enterprise. The Finance Committee voted 5-0 to recommend at their July 21 meeting, and Budget and Finance voted 3-0 to recommend at their August 5 meeting. I'm going to open the public hearing at this time. It is 7:20 PM. And Town Manager, Castaneda Davis, do you have anything to add to this? I know that we discussed it recently.
No, we've discussed this pretty in-depth, Mosef. Thank you.
All right, great, thank you. At this time, are there any questions from the public? Seeing none. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak in favor? Seeing none. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none. Councilors, are there any questions that we have of the town manager on this one? Yeah?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Mr. Castaneda Davis. It's on the kickoff meeting, it says that they'll prepare an initial kickoff meeting with the town, and the project manager, will we be, would be in front of the whole town, or are you considered the town?
No, I wouldn't be with the whole town. That's internal meetings, usually OPM, staff, and the team that's doing the project.
Okay, have you met the, do you know who the project manager's going to be? It's from APAC?
I have, hold on, do we have it? Our DPW director can speak to that.
Yes, so our OPM that we have, Helen Gordon, is the lead person, and Mr. Eric Bezerv, who has an in-depth knowledge and expertise in this field, is the chief project manager and engineer for AECOM.
Thank you, Azu, I appreciate it. I have no other questions.
The only addition I would add to that is that Ms. Gordon has worked on a variety of projects for us, so she's kind of in the loop on what's going on here, so that's a benefit here with this project.
Thank you. Any further questions from councilors? Okay, it is 7:22. We will now close the hearing. I'll ask for a motion for approval and a second.
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. And anything further from the councilors? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we go on to Item C, loan authorization. This is for the Community Septic Management Program, Title V Homeowner Loans. This hearing has been duly advertised in the July 29, 2029, 2025 enterprise. The Finance Committee voted 5-0 to recommend at their July 21 meeting, and Budget and Finance voted 3-0 to recommend at our August 5 meeting. I'll now open the hearing. It is 7:23 PM, and again, I'll ask our town manager if there's anything further to add here.
Nothing to add.
All right, thank you. Are there any general questions from the public on this one? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak in favor? Seeing none. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none. And councilors, do we have any questions of our town manager on this program? Okay, great.
Actually, I have a question.
Sure.
On this loan program, where you make loans to the homeowners that need to update their septic systems, is there a ceiling on how much can be loaned? I was just curious.
I actually don't know if there's a ceiling. I do know typically the septic replacements are between $30,000 and $50,000. I don't know if there's any ceiling. I don't, I don't believe there's any ceiling.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything further from the councilors?
I would just agree, and I haven't seen, in my work, I haven't seen a septic come in below 42 in the last year, so it's very uncommon for it to be on the lower end, more so on the higher end.
Thank you. Anything further? Okay, we will now close the hearing. It is 7:24 PM, and I'll ask for a motion for approval and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, you have a motion and a second. Anything further, councilors? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next, we have license transaction, license transactions, rather, Petition P. 2026-002, alcohol establishment, change of officers. This is for Cumberland Farms of Massachusetts, and I'll just ask our town manager if there's any explanation or clarification that we need on this one.
No, the petitioner has submitted all the documents and requirements to submit to the ABCC, and they've submitted their filing fee to the town. Simple enough, no issues on our end.
All right, great. I'll entertain a motion for approval, a second for a discussion for councilors.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion or questions on this one? Okay, yep, to Council Lindy.
Just a question, through you to the town manager. Is it one of the Cumberland Farms, both of the Cumberland Farms? Do you know?
I believe it's just one.
Okay, thank you.
And it is the 1,1001 Pleasant Street.
Okay, thank you.
Great, anything further? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, motion carries. Next, we are on to, we do not have any presentations. We do have a few items on our town manager report.
First one, Fire Station update. Bob will do that one.
So in your package, you got the monthly update that we do. We continue to be ahead of schedule. I met with the OPM last week. Initially, if we had started on time, we would have been completed with the project in January or February. We didn't start on time, but we're going to be done with the project probably in November or December. So we're in the final stretch. As I think I mentioned in the last meeting, we're scheduling furniture delivery and installation. Communication work is going on, so things are going well. So I know Councilmember Murphy had been out there for a tour. I would offer that if any of you are interested, just communicate through Mrs. Ward to me so we can give them enough notice. If there's more than four of you, we need to post that, because it's a meeting, but individually, we can make that happen.
Great, how was it?
It was very good. That was going to be my first comment. I think it's a, it's a good opportunity for folks to go if they can take advantage of it. The layout's there, so you get a good feel for how it's going to look and how the function's going to work in there. There's also some excellent public space in there, and I think I talked about that last time, so I think it's good that we start talking about that space, and there's a good-sized meeting room in there, so hopefully folks take advantage of that. I do have a question, if I could, but I don't know if we're there yet.
Yeah.
I think I've asked this question before of you, but just to clarify, there's roughly $160,000 worth of winter condition costs on the change log. Could you just clarify what that means?
So concrete work, most of that has to do with concrete work that was initially anticipated to be done in the late summer, fall, because it had to be done in the wintertime, bringing in heaters and purchasing blankets to keep the concrete from setting up improperly, is what largely those expenses are. Unfortunately, we did not start the project on time, so it moved the schedule back. However, I can say that the general contractor and their subs did not adjust any of their pricing because of the delay, but we did have, incur those additional winter costs.
Anything else?
Thank you. Just a quick question, how are we doing on contingency with that, Mr. Rully?
I'm sorry?
How are we doing on the contingency with that project?
Yeah, I mean, we're still at about 50% remaining in contingency. You know, there will be some surprises, but no major surprises from this point forward.
Thank you so much.
And just, if I can come back to Mr. Murphy for a second, we negotiated down that number a little bit on the winter conditions as well.
I do see a refund of $42,000. It's just, it was eye-catching to me that we paid an additional $160,000.
As it was to me.
Like, we didn't know it was going to be a winter.
Right. Yep.
Mr. Lindy?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Rully for keeping the contingency down and, you know, monitoring the project closely.
Any further questions on the Fire Station update? Okay, thank you.[1767.83] Thank you.
Regarding the DPW update, I'm going to have Azu just give a brief update about Flag Street, because I know that question was asked at a previous meeting. But I did want to point out, in the packet, I did include the DPW Operational Report Update. I want to take an opportunity to highlight that as part of a process that we do with the community, every month, we give operational updates. These updates are on our website. They're under the Town Managers page. And all the, a good amount of our departments provide updates. And in this update, what you'll see for July, it does include Flag Street and some of the other projects that people have been interested in. So I wanted to take a minute to highlight, those are important updates to take a look at. They do address some of the questions that have already been asked. Furthermore, I'm doing a little refresh on it moving forward, so we definitely want to promote that moving forward. Take a look at the operational updates. They do come out on a monthly basis. Azu, I want to speak to Flag Street specifically. And with Flag Street, I want to highlight it because I understand this was part of a capital improvement program, but the work that we've done is under emergency services, so I wanted Azu to explain that a little bit, and why we might not have water main work associated with it.
Thank you, Mr. Castaneda-Davis. Yeah, so the original plan that we had included five locations, Flag Street, Cross Street, South Street, Vernon Street, Main Street, and then a looping of water from South Street to Vernon through Green Street. We did provide the, our capital needs and the budgets for that, and those monies have not really been appropriated or raised. Couple years ago, we started noticing a lot of sinkholes. Flag Street was one of them. We pared it down from a complete streets project because we didn't have the proper right of way width to do it as a complete streets project. But we pared down the, you know, the sidewalk component of it, the back, the bike lane component of it, but it still was running up between $7 and $8 million for water main, sidewalk, well, full-depth excavation. And a couple years ago, we started noticing and getting feedbacks from residents. There were a lot of potholes that we were filling, but because the drainage system on that road was laid out way more than 50 years ago, and it was built out of corrugated aluminum pipes, and those were rotten. And so what happened is when the pipes collapsed, the water that goes through your catch basin just sits in the soil and weakens the soil, and so you get all those potholes. It truly is a miracle that we didn't have anybody disappearing in one of those sinkholes, because one of them was actually 10 by 10 by 6 feet. And so rather than keep managing and waiting to have the budget to do the full work, the former Town Manager took an initiative, which was very good, to declare an emergency, and that allowed us to, I believe, use some upper money. It's American Rescue.
Plan Act.
Yeah, thank you. Plus Chapter 90 funding that we get from the state. So what we backed on is to take care of the drainage, because that was, was costing the sinkholes. The water main component of it was almost $2 million, and you couldn't call that an emergency work. It's, it's a selective work that we would have liked to do to upgrade the water main in that area. But the emergency nature of the work required that we replace the drainage system, the entire 6,000 feet of Flag Street. And then, of course, when you do that, you'll have to rebuild the roadway. So that's where we are. The drainage has been completed, and then what we will do is, in the next couple of weeks, we'll have a team, Maury, it's a reclamation company that will come, and then grind down the patch so that we can get into a good pavement base, and then we will level that up, just like what we did with the South Street. What you see on South Street is not defined on code, but it's drivable and good. And so that's what we'll do, and then we'll let it sit through the winter to make sure that there are no more, our issues, and then we'll pave it in spring. But that's where we are. So we are not doing that water, because there was no money for it, and it was not, it couldn't declare that as an emergency, because it wasn't.
Any questions specifically on Flag Street? What is the timeline for replacing the, the water main?
Right now, it's not, quite frankly, it's not in the radar, because we don't have the funding for it. It was part of all that, those five locations that I mentioned a little earlier in the capital projects, and that's all over $40 million that we came up with. And that was very conservative. That was, you didn't have a lot of fluff in it. So, and once we pave, put the finished coating on Flag Street, we can dig it up.
Yeah, that's, that's how I was thinking, is I'd hate to dig it up in a year or two.
But what we can do, because the main that we're going to be replacing is transite, which is basically our pipe that you don't want to disturb. While it's in natural state right now, it functions fine, but once you disturb it, you can fix it, because it's really, it's an AC material. So what I've done is based on the survey that our engineering division has done, we can replace the line in the shoulder. So we don't have to, where we would have put in some sidewalk, where we don't have enough width for the sidewalk, we can do the water main installation, so that we aren't digging up the actual travel lane.
Thank you.
Is there a timeline for the current work that's being done?
Yes.
What would be the final, finalized?
So the leveling will be done by end of September.
Okay.
Okay? And then all the castings, which means the cash basins, the manholes, the water gates, the gas gates will all be adjusted to that level. And then when we come back in spring, then we'll adjust them back to the final grade of the pavement, which will be in spring. Then we'll finish that up, and then it'll be good.
Thank you.
Anything further? Okay, thank you. That's great.
Next is the MBTA Communities Funding Opportunities. We had asked about some funding opportunities that the town has realized, some of the programs were eligible for being a MBTA compliant community. So you have a memo from Bob that outlines that. You know, if there's any specific questions about that, you can obviously ask some questions to Bob and myself. I think I did want to highlight a couple of things. There are some also ancillary things that are factored in being a housing, housing community, compliant community. For example, Complete Streets was mentioned, and I think I'm going to discuss that in our next item on Town Manager's Report. Even though you do not have to be compliant or a community there, it is listed as a bonus to be, you know, a housing choice community. And there's a whole host of other additional programs. I was on the website, taking a look, that they give you bonus points for considerations. And one, like I mentioned, was Complete Streets. I take a look at another one that I think the town would probably be looking at, the Clean Water Trust Housing Choice Loan Program. If you, if you are a housing choice community, your interest rate gets reduced, about half a point. There's a whole host of other programs that you don't have to be compliant, but it gives you additional points. So I think that's something to consider. In addition to that, the MBTA Communities Catalyst Fund, I particularly want to point that fund out, because it's a $15 million fund that not every community is eligible for. Right now, the town is condition compliant with MBT, with our MBTA zoning. But if you become fully compliant, you have access to that $15 million fund. And I particularly point that out, because I, in fact, I put the similarity to CPA. Initially, when we, early adopters of the CPA, they had access to a lot more funds that other communities didn't have access to. The more compliant, as more communities became compliant, then the pool obviously became reduced. So before, early adopters were getting 100%. Now you see that number has whittled down. There's a lot of communities that are condition compliant. They're working, just like we're going to potentially consider in the future, to become compliant, so they can get access to that fund early on. For example, I was looking at the list of some of the, you know, grants that have been allocated. Arlington got $3 million, $1 million. Easton got money for sewer. You want to try to be an early adopter, so you can get access to those funds. You're not eligible for those funds while you're condition compliant. So I think hopefully this addressed the question regarding what we're eligible for, and open up for any other questions.
Yes, I have a question. Would us adopting 15 units per acre make us compliant?
Yeah, I think one, we want to have a conversation when we bring it up before the council, but I think the letter, specifically from the state, and this is not atypical from other communities, it said the way that we had initially put that language in it, we weren't compliant. They looked at it as a cap. I do not think, based on what they've said, we would not be compliant with that. So that's why we're looking at changing the language, and I think, off the top of my head, Bob, if you want to come up. It's, why don't we say exactly what that language changes real quick?
And addressing the gentleman previously, why the acreage is what it is, it's, the acreage is determined by a half-mile radius from where your MBTA assets are, so it's not that they pick 75 acres. That's just how it comes out. But to, if we look at 75 acres, and we look at 15 units per acre, we fall woefully short of the 1401 that is required. I just point out that in the CDBS, which is not part of the Form Based Code, under our current zoning, we allow much more than 15 units per acre, and with density bonuses, you can get over 20 units, almost 26 units an acre. So, I mean, that is a conversation that's going to happen next Wednesday in the joint meeting between the CD Committee and the Planning Board. I'm not sure it's appropriate to get that deep into that tonight, but...
Bob, can you just remind us the minimum number of potential buildable units?
1401. 1401.
Yeah, because 15 times 75 is 1125.
Correct.
Which puts us below, so that's why the acreage needs to be what it is. Or what the density needs to be.
And again, I mean, and again, we'll get into it next week, but we have to look at, you know, what our zoning is now. I mean, it's, our zoning now allows more than 15 units per acre. There is no density requirement in the CDBR right now.
Thank you.
I have another question for Mr. Rully, and that is that suppose we were to go to a greater amount to make us at 1401, would we be compliant to get the state to invest in our water system?
Well, it certainly would help. You know, I can't say with certainty, but as the Town Manager has just highlighted, and we're missing opportunities now to access some of those catalyst funds. You know, certainly, we've expressed to the state their interest in developing or having a developer come in at 106 Hale Street, that we're challenged with water and sewer capacity, so we're looking for them to help us. But the more we're compliant, the better off we are. And the only thing I want to still mention, too, is that we had 180 days from our notice from the state that we had conditional compliance. That expires at the end of September, so the clock is ticking with respect to that. There won't be an extension. But I think the more that we're following the rules as the state has promulgated, the better we're going to be.
Mr. Lindy?
So in preparation for the meeting on the 20th, all of this is hard to follow. I know you understand it, because you're a professional. Can we have some kind of slides for that meeting that will show differences, like in terms of what the current zoning is and what's allowed and what we're considering? So when the public is there for the hearing, we can show that.
Sure. I mean, and I think, you know, we can certainly do that. I will circulate a link to the CD Committee and the Planning Board visited this last year. That meeting is on Zoom. Our consultants were there, talked through it. So I will send that link. People can watch that meeting to understand the, the explanation, but certainly, we can put some slides together to help navigate through this.
That would be helpful, because I wasn't on CD at that point in time. It was a completely different committee, and I'll be glad to watch that meeting. Thank you.
Did you want to go? Yes, I have been playing with the numbers, just out of curiosity, and if we have 18.6, we amount to 1408 units. So do you think that we could go with that and limit the amount of building in town?
I don't know how much you want me...
I prefer we don't actually discuss this at this...
Yeah, we're getting it kind of outside the scope of the report. I think that we should hash this out in our subcommittee meetings, and then obviously in the, in the hearing. Yeah.
Comment, those probably won't be televised, will they?
That is a hybrid meeting. We will be meeting here as well as streaming the meeting.
Okay.
And they'll be in council chambers?
They will be.
All right, thank you.
I have some questions about the funding in particular.
Sure.
If I could. Mr. Rully, thank you for putting this together. I wish folks could see this in the audience, so if you can't, there's some good information in here that hopefully will be posted after the fact. But there's seven grants listed on here, and then, I believe, 13 additional grants. With the exception of the MBTA Communities Catalyst Fund, the other grants, I don't believe necessarily require MBTA approval for a community to apply to, correct?
Well, no, that's not correct. I mean, so most of the other, other than the catalyst fund, fall under the category of the One Stop Program. The One Stop Program requires that you be in compliance and that you have no moratoriums on further develop, housing development.
Okay. And then just to confirm, if, if my math is correct here, we've received just over $200,000 in grants because we've been in compliance to date?
Over that number, for sure, yes.
It looks like 164 for the Initiative for Vision to Reality, and then there's an additional 30...
And the $3 million for the Hanson Farm Conservation Restriction.
And that was because we were compliant?
Because we are in compliance.
Okay. Thank you.
Can, sorry, last question. Can you speak a little bit to the relationship between that grant? And you, you said this, you said this before, so I apologize for asking you to repeat it, because a resident did ask me the connection between the Hanson Farm Conservation Restriction and MBTA, so could you just go over that one more time?
So that funding came through the Municipal Vulnerability, the MVP Program Preparedness. That is a program under the One Stop. So, I mean, it falls into that category.
Thank you.
And I associate that, as I was trying to intimate earlier, there are programs where you get bonus points for being a housing choice community. So I want to make sure we're very clear. And sometimes, people correlate MBTA community zoning and housing choice community. We've got to clarify that. You get bonus considerations. So as some community, maybe you might have gotten five points. If you weren't a housing choice community, you only got the five points, but if you were, you get seven points, and that might get you over the threshold to get that additional funding. So that's the importance of that. Those are the discretionary points that give you some, some added boost for your application.
Anything further?
Yes. Is BSU involved in this process, and have they been advocating for Bridgewater as the host town?
I would say that we are in constant communication with BSU. I think that they are one of the strongest advocates that we have in Boston with the Healy Administration, because of their stature. So to answer your question simply, yes.
And I would add to that. I met with Mr. Clark and their team about two weeks ago, really just looking to collaborate and make sure that we're working in good stewardship to advocate for as many resources and funds for the community, and I think we're going to have success there. So I would say, add to Bob, absolutely, yes. Yep.
Thank you.
One last thing. I would like our Town Manager to find out, how much water does BSU use in relation to our total volume of water? If you could find out. Thank you.
We have that information. We'll get it to you.
I think you're on to D now.
Yeah. This is sort of a quick one. I know the comment was asked about the Central Square pedestrian crosshose, that area. Actually, two weeks before that meeting, we were out there with the team, talking about ways that we can improve that area. Now, I know that we've looked at this in the past, we're looking at it holistically, but also, what's really important to me, to see if we can make some meaningful changes, even if they're smaller, and gets us to that long-term goal. As I mentioned before, I'm looking at Complete Streets. I know we have the access to that. I'm working with Azu, our police chief, fire chief, Bob. We're going to see what we can do out there. But we've already actively worked at that. We're meeting again next week to see what we can do. So it's a priority for our team. We're looking at that. And then, real briefly, the golf course. I obviously listened to the residents and some of the questions regarding the golf course. We did submit all the information regarding the golf course. We forwarded to the Parks and Rec Commission. We forwarded some of this information to some of our councillors. But I want to make very clear for the residents, we've provided all this information regarding the golf course, it's on the Town Manager's website. There's a heading under there for the golf course. It lists out all the contracts, bidding process, RFPs, everything. All the information that you would want to see is right there, transparent for you. One of the last clarifications I know was mentioned that the contract is up next year. That is not factual. It was extended for five years, so this is till 2032. This contract's signed, it's done. And that's all that I have to say regarding that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions or requests of counselors of our town manager?
Thank you. Mr. President, Mr. Casanova, I know you have an August meeting at the Senior Center. So, I've had some seniors ask me these two questions over and over, so maybe you could explain it to them. One is the Senior Tax Abatement Program, so it's based on personal state income. Can the town lower the age requirement from 65 to 60, or does the state? And the other one is the SAVE Program. So, they get credits if they volunteer to help in the town. Except, the credits are subject to federal Medicare and OBA, O B R A. The total credits of the exemption would equate to the amount earned less federal Medicare taxes and O B R A. So, they're wondering, how do they figure out it is worth it to volunteer if they're going to get taxed by Medicare, federal, and I don't know, not sure what O B R A is. So, I've tried to look into it, but it's kind of complicated. Thank you.
Any, anything else for town manager?
Just a quick one. I think one of our citizens asked last week about Rainbow's End update there. If we could look at that park and just see what the update status is there, that would be helpful.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll now move on. We do not have any discussions on the agenda. Committee reports. Do we have any committee reports from our chairs? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Procedures met in July. We had five items from 2021, and a member of the Charter Committee attended to help understand some of the stuff. One we tabled, it was an item that was dealt with punctuation. It was vague, so we're waiting for the new Charter Committee to look into it. And one, Mr. Kennedy rewrote. It's, we tabled the old one because it was outdated. And it's about the state, the years the town managers hired for, you know, specifically the contract for three or five up in front. And that's on the, on the agenda. The other three items, the committee members are gathering more information for our next meeting. And we, I don't think we discussed that other one, no. So, we have two, and we, Kennedy, Mr. Kennedy wrote two.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the TIF Ad Hoc Committee met, and we did vote 5 to 0 to refer the item back to council so that it could be potentially referred to advertising. Upon further reflection and watching the meeting back and hearing that there were not only unanswered questions on the part of the committee by the end of the meeting, but also from our residents, I, as the chair, contacted our council president and said, in good faith, I feel that we need to refer the measure back to committee to make sure that every single question is answered and every stone is unturned so that we are getting this right the first time. Our town can't afford to advertise something improperly, so I want to make sure that whatever we're putting out for advertising, if it gets to that point, that it is correct. So, when that item does come up later on in the meeting, my motion will be to refer it back to the committee as President Loretta did mention at the beginning of the meeting. So, that is the most recent update as far as the TIF Ad Hoc Committee is concerned. And any residents that have questions can feel free to email me or see me after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Strategic Planning met last week. We are working on finalizing the goals for the town manager. We'll be meeting one final time on the 21st to finalize the document, so it will be in front of the council for the beginning of September. Great, thank you. Any further committee reports? Okay, thank you. Next, we have our legislation for action. A, Ordinance D FY25-015, Ordinance Establishing the Process for Filling a Vacant Town Councilor Role. Rules and Procedures, back in April, voted 3-0 to recommend with amendments and there, at their, again, in their April meeting. So, I will ask Counselor Murphy to reintroduce this to us. This is a new council, and we may have some amendments. So, I'll ask Counselor Murphy to guide us through this.
Yeah, I'll think back as far as I can, and hopefully I can help address this. This was to address what we identified as a gap within the process for filling a vacancy for the town council. There was a short period in between, well, I'm not going to go into detail, but there was a gap within how, the process to fill a town councilor seat. And then, there was also some discussion about giving a process in which folks would then interview, give a presentation, and also include room for public comment throughout that process as well, too, so that the public could have a say and provide feedback to the council before any decisions were made. And so, I believe this does this and addresses that process, and then hopefully we can move on to the amendments.
Great. Did you want to make a motion to introduce those amendments?
Uh, yeah. I mean, I can. They weren't my amendments, but...
Yeah, all right.
I'll make the motion.
They were, they were the Prior Rules and Procedures Committee, I guess, so...
I believe so, yes. It might have been mine then, right?
Yeah, I mean...
I'll make the motion.
All right.
I'll second that for discussion.
So, again, this is just for the amendments. I did read through this, and it essentially just corrects the, the language where it was referring to the Charter and correcting for a referral to the Admin Code because there is a process in the Charter which is then further clarified later on in the Administrative Code. And I will defer to our town attorney to make sure that I have that correct.
Yeah, and I'm actually, before this goes for a final vote, we should probably do a final review just to make sure that we match it up against the Charter. But I, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe this amendment was intended to amend Section 2-5C, not 2EC. Because 2-5C would be the third layer of the vacancies. So, that may be just the first thing I'm looking at, just off the top of my head, for an amendment. And then, we should, we should just compare it to the Charter. But I believe the intent of, of this was, the last time, there was some issue with the shall fill, the vacancy. So, this is, this is to essentially fill in that ambiguity. And then, the bottom part is the process by which that gets filled if the council votes to fill it.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, 2-5 is correct. I also have one other additional amendment after the fact, but I had that listed and one more.
So, we can, we can obviously talk before the final vote and just make sure we go through it a little more thoroughly. But just looking at it here, before you vote for advertising, just a couple of those. Those are my comments.
So, before we refer to advertising, would we have to make those, those changes?
I, you don't have to, but I think certainly the change of the Charter section that you're referencing, you want to change. I think, I think the actual section is, it can be Article 2, Section 2-5, and then it's Subarticle C, so it's Section 2-5C. So, I, I would recommend you make a motion to amend just to reflect that reference properly. Any other amendments can, can happen, obviously, before your final vote, but at least that will give you the proper reference to the Charter section.
Okay.
I have one additional, very small amendment, too, if I could. In Section 5, Number 1, Eligibility, I refer to the Charter as Home Rule Charter. But everywhere else, I just refer to the Bridgewater Charter. So, could we just make that language consistent, Deb? Section 5, Number 1 there.
And our charter is a special act charter.
Right, so it's not correct, right?
Right. It's not a 40, it's not a 43B Charter. It's a charter adopted by way of special act, which is how we also amend our charter.
So, just change that to Town Charter?
Yes, yeah.
So, you just need to make sure there's a motion and a second for those two.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendments? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, the, this is just for the amendments. Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, are we back to the original amendments in our agenda? Or did, do we have to make another motion for those? Because we had that on the table, and then we introduced additional amendments.
What did you have on the table?
The original motion was to introduce the amendments which are in our agenda.
Which you just voted.
Okay, and then...
And now, you vote to send it to advertising?
I don't believe so, sorry. The ones that were in the agenda are the ones that I originally made a motion for to approve. And then, you had made a correction about the...
I see. Yeah, so you want to, you want to vote both those amendments?
Right.
And then, you want to vote to send to advertising?
Okay, so we're back to the original motion for the original amendment?
That's right.
Okay, so that is, that is what's up for consideration. Is there any discussion on the original amendments as, as they're proposed in our packet? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay. Okay, so now that we have that amended, we have this to be considered for advertising. Do we have a motion for approval and a second for discussion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions, comments, discussions from counselors as it, as it stands amended?
I have a comment, and that is that I'm not really in favor of ranked choice voting. I consider that to be a little bit controversial and not as straight up as regular a and a. So, that's just a comment.
Okay. Any further, yes?
I kind of echo the concern with ranked choice, mostly because it's not something we generally do and don't generally do in the state. So, it's going to be some public education as to how those decisions are made. I do, however, recognize that we do need to come to a better solution to the way that we do things. So, barring a vote tonight, I would be more than happy to work with Counselor Murphy or anyone else if there's an alternative solution to be found.
Yeah, okay. All right, yes?
I would just make a further comment. Having lived through the process, I would say just having a process is the best way to start if that's ranked choice voting and it somehow does not work at that point. Having something where we can actually have as a basement, bottom level, starting point is very important. And that's why I feel having a process, even if it's ranked choice voting, which might not be as familiar, it gives every single candidate the same valuable opportunity to not only be heard, but to be selected 1 through 5, 1 through 4, 1 through 3, what have you.
Any further comments? Yes?
Yeah, you did a good job. I, I don't like the rank. I don't like the ranked choice. I did feel bad that other candidates never got a chance to be voted on. So, if we could come up with a different way, this seems complicated to me. So, I, I wouldn't want that.
I have a question. Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to comment on the ranked choice. Because I, I agree, it is a complicated process, and I think Counselor McGrath just hit on it. What we were trying to do is address the fact that if we had seven, eight members trying to apply for one seat, that all of them had gotten heard and had been voted on. And then, we eliminated sort of the lowest vote getter and made our way up the chain. Because if we had done regular voting process, then we, we may have taken a vote after the first person and approved and never even heard the other seven or eight. But I, too, am open to any suggestions on a better process that could include hearing from all candidates and giving them a fair choice.
Anything further from counselors? I have a question for our town attorney. In regard to, to process, it looks like on, in the Admin Code, this is Section 2, down to C, and it does address this here. There does seem to be a process. It's not as well detailed as Counselor Murphy has, has here. But is that our current process? Because it does mention, you know, announcement at town council meetings, communication, the council shall set a date, and then it mentions the agenda will, will allow for a reasonable period of commentary from the public about the candidates prior to a vote being taken. So, it does address some of these things.
Yeah.
It's, again, it's not as detailed and nicely written as Counselor Murphy has here, but is that our current process?
Yes.
Okay, and it defers to Robert's Rules?
So, it's that coupled with the Charter sections of filling the vacancy. That's what you have currently.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, so for me, my, my concern here is that this is the only piece that, where we address filling vacancies, where it allows the council complete discretion over whether they should fill it. The Charter's written, in my opinion, pretty clearly that it shall fill the seat. And I know that there's a lot of discussion about this, you know, months ago when, when this was initially done. And my fear here, and I do believe that we are all reasonable people, and not that anybody isn't, that would serve here in the future. But in theory, somebody could step down from their, their seat in May, and we could have an eight-person body for the next 11 months if the council chooses to not fill the seat. And, and that's my, you know, initial concern with, with this process is it mentions numerous times that it's under the purview of the council if they choose to fill that vacancy. I believe that, that we should. And then, in regard to the ranked choice, I think it's, it's a great recommendation, but I think that as it is, it's, it's a little confusing, and I don't see any issue with the current Roberts Rules way of doing things. Those are just, those are just my, my comments on, on how it's presented here. Anything, anything further?
Nope, yeah, sorry.
Oh, no problem. So, just speaking to your points, again, this kind of fills the gap that in the Charter lists the timeframe shortly after an election and shortly before. It is like that 18-month window or so that, again, there's some ambiguity. So, again, it's a great attempt to, to fill that. My concern, like I said, it seems like many counselors do have questions on, on the process, whether it be, like I say, a ranked choice voting process, maybe additional language if we don't like that process to, or, you know, or another process to be terminated at the time. But I would imagine that based on this ambiguity or questions from other counselors, we may want to send this back to Rules and Procedures before sending to advertising to get these changes made. That's going to make more clarification on the process.
Okay.
I would, what I would recommend is, since we don't have a motion to send to RMP, I would prefer, if Counselor Murphy is open to it, to work together to try to find a solution that meets all of the concerns that everyone's voiced. I do think that there is a potential for that. This is well-written. And I think that we could highlight a lot of those points as well and potentially work on something to, to address that, so...
Do you want to keep this as is and refer? Or do you want to work on a, a new piece of legislation?
If it's going to go to, it's going to go to Rules and Procedures and come back anyways, I'd prefer, instead of just amending it through Rules and Procedure, to work on it and put it together. I think that it could be done in a timely manner, so... If that's what the goal would be, is to get it out as soon as possible.
So, I'll make a motion to keep it at a council level.
Could I just ask a question before we do that motion? So, since you guys are going to keep it, can I remind you guys that, you know, Mr. Robinson left? Had we not filled that seat, then Brad left, and we would have been down. So, that's why I think the shall, that we should do it, is important. And then, it gives, I mean, like the president here, he was here on, on the committee for a while, and then the residents got to vote for him. So, they're not on long, but it gives each resident a chance to be on here. We pick someone, and then the next election, they're going to be up for anyways. So, I think that it's, I think last time showed us how important it is that we do fill those seats. Thank you.
All right, so would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to keep it at a council level.
Second.
Do you have a second? Any discussion on keeping it at a council level? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, next, we have Proposed Zoning Ordinance FY25-018, Zoning Map Amendment, Business B and Residence C Districts in the Bedford Street, Winter Street, and Flag Street area. This would, this was advertised in the August 1st 25 Enterprise. The Planning Board voted 5-0 to recommend. Community and Economic Development also voted 3-0 to recommend. This was at a joint public hearing back in April of 16. This was originally brought forward by, by Counselor Fred Chase and then reintroduced by Dr. Perry. So, I will just have Dr. Perry provide any comments on this one.
Again, yeah, most of the counselors have seen this. This is basically an amendment to the zoning map to incorporate some residential land that was in a commercial district into a residential situation in the Bedford Street, Winter Street, Flag Street area.
Okay. So, with that, do I have a motion for approval and a second for discussion?
So moved.
I have a motion, second, and a second. Any discussion on, on the zoning amendment?
I have one question, Mr. President. So, the residents, some of their property wasn't considered business?
Yes, they just, they just took, so, some of the area that was, you know, as...
Yes, they just, they just took, so some of the area that was, you know, as a residential that was in a commercial zone based on the way the lines were, they've just changed those lines to make it residential.
So now that it's resident, they can put an accessory dwelling unit on their property?
I'm not sure what the plan is for the property. I just-
But now they could, because now it's not in business. It's back to residential?
If that's what the, if it's allowed, then that would be residential, yes.
All right, thanks.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have order FY 25-071, an order establishing a tax increment financing district for 6286 Broad Street. We already discussed this earlier, but I'll let Counselor Strickles just reiterate, and then we'll look for a motion potentially.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So the committee did vote 5 to nothing to bring it back to council to hopefully refer it to advertising, as I mentioned. Upon review of the information that we received during the meeting and some unanswered questions that we as a committee and as the general public felt were still on the table, we felt in good faith that it was best to refer it back to our committee so we could get those questions answered and still maintain a timely manner with all of this, just to make sure we're getting this right, and any question that anyone had would get answered properly. So I would make a motion to send it back to the Tifad Haq Committee.
Second. And we have a second. Any, any discussion, councilors?
I just, thank you, Counselor Strickles, for doing your due diligence. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, and thank you to that committee. You guys are working hard. You guys have already met a couple of times, and looking forward to you continuing to do the diligence that this, this required, so, so thank you very much. Anything further? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
One abstain.
Thank you. Okay, we have no old business. We will go on to new business. We have a proposed ordinance FY 26-002, amendment to the Bridgewater Town Charter, Article 4, Section 4-1. Town manager, term of office. I will ask Councilors Kennedy and Lindy to introduce this for us.
So I'll, go ahead. So this came across rules and procedure. We had something in front of us that we were reviewing and working with a member of the previous charter review committee from 2021. The language within the ordinance that we received did not line up with that. So we discussed that, and we wanted to put forward one that aligned closer with that. So all this does is put a limit on the renewable contract to three years, which is in line with many contracts that we have currently. And we felt like that that was appropriate, so we, we went with that. That was also what was recommended. So we were just going to continue with what was recommended.
Thank you. Did you have a counselor, a question for Counselor Kennedy? Oh, yeah, so, yeah, thank you for introducing, and do I have a, or rather, I'm looking for a motion to refer to rules and procedures, a motion and a second for discussion?
Some of.
Thank you. And then Mary, did you have a question for, for Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, for doing this. I was just wondering on the bottom, should we be putting the, you know, the town of Bridgewater at least 10 days before its final passage by the town council and all that, since it's not going to advertising or anything like that? We're working on it. I just don't want people to think within 10 days it's going to be-
Sure, we, we can remove that from the explanation, shorten the explanation.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Do you guys want to make those amendments and rules and procedures and bring it back?
Sure.
Okay, great. Any further discussion on referring over to rules and procedures? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Next, proposed ordinance FY 26-003, another amendment to the Bridgewater Town Charter, Article 8, Section 8-2, citizen referendum petition timeframe, and then this is also brought forward by Counselor Kennedy.
So again, with the charter review committee, we, we were discussing this. This came up during our rules and procedures meeting. And this is also a concern that I've heard from residents as well, that there isn't enough time to gather the signatures. And I understand that there does need to be a time limit on that, because we, we have business to do. But I do think it's, and we also need to give a fair chance to the residents to petition to change something or bring something forward. So that's what the goal of this is. It's just to extend the time limit on what we already have from 10 days to 30 days.
Thank you. So looking for a motion to refer this to rules and procedures. Do you have a motion and a, and a second?
Motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, motion carries. Okay, next. Counselor Kennedy is busy. Proposed general ordinance FY 26-004, amendment to Chapter 3, Article 2, Section 1, Business Ethics and Conduct. Sean, if you could introduce this for us, please.
Sure. This goal of this is just to update our current language, which has a much shorter list of departments and town officials that are covered under this. We have Massachusetts laws that don't cover specific municipal employees. So I wanted to update the list. We also had departments that were created after the, the original ordinance, which was in 2013. So it was just to update that, and again, add any additional committees or anyone who would be touching, say, grants, funding, advising on things, whether or not they have financial investments or, or their, their properties align, or any number of things. I tried to exclude committees that most likely would not have those kinds, so we're not overburdening the committees themselves. But it was to try to create some more public transparency, or transparency for the public, I should say, and update it from what we currently have.
Thank you. So we're looking for a motion to refer to all rules and procedures. Thank you, motion and a second, and any, any discussion on this one, guys? Yes?
I just want to thank Counselor Kennedy for introducing these three items on our agenda. That's no easy feat, so I just wanted to give you kudos on that, and I look forward to seeing what rules and procedures brings back.
Yes, thank you for your diligence. Anything further, councilors? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, next, we have order FY 26-014. This is a transfer order, CPC First Parish Unitarian Church Window Project. I'll ask our town manager to introduce this for us, please.
We got approval from the CPC to use about $38,000 for the first church windows. It'll be funded from the historic reserve account. There's about $560,000 in that account. The CPC is going to fund approximately about 49% of the project. They're using some of their own funds to do this work. And I believe it is to paint, good condition, glazing, epoxy, and paint restoration to ensure the longevity of the windows. And I got approval from CPC.
So we'd just be looking for a motion to refer to budget and finance in the finance committee. Motion and a second for discussion?
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Any, any discussion on this one? Yes, Mark?
I'm just going to recuse myself from this because I'm a member of that church, just in the interest of disclosure and transparency.
Okay, thank you. Anything further? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, last one. A resolution here, FY 26-001. This is for Town River Landing Phase 1 improvements. I, I brought this forward, and Counselor McGrath did help me with this. We discussed it, and I neglected to ask Debbie to put her name on it, so my apologies. But Al Laserta and the Fire for Effect Foundation, for those who aren't aware, they are essentially the stewards of the Town River Landing area, and they've been doing a wonderful job building that area up. They are doing some really great events, farmers' markets all summer. There's a car show, I believe, as well in, in September, and I believe that there's going to be some other events. Rumor has that Counselor Murphy is working on doing something over there with, with Al, so we really, really appreciate that. Al has worked to provide us with a master plan, which is attached to our agenda. If any residents want to take a look, I'd encourage you to look at our agenda packet online. This is an extensive plan to revitalize the area all the way from gazebo to paving to making a really nice community space for our residents to enjoy, and I'm personally really excited about it. What's before us is a resolution asking our town manager to go through the process of applying for eligibility first, and then applying for CPC or CPI funding through the, through the CPC. So we're asking him to consider doing that, and I would love if we had approval from this, from this body to help complete Phase 1, which is essentially getting the gazebo completed. The, the money would really be for the procurement of materials, and the work is going to be mostly done by students at BP. So we are going to have Bridgewater High School students that are going to be doing this work. So it's a really great opportunity to serve the community in so many different ways. And I'll ask Counselor McGrath if she has anything else to add before we go for a motion here.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe, well, because Al, I believe we're the only town in Massachusetts that has First Responders Day. And I was roped into the trick-or-treat by my daughter. And that was a huge success. I've never seen so many town people and so many kids come up for one event. So they're very successful in everything he does, so I think as a town, we should support him.
Great. So with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to just keep this at the council level.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
And a second. Any, any discussion or comments from councilors?
No, I just wanted to say thank you for putting this forward, and honestly, it's nice to see so much support from other councilors for this. I think that this brings in people and business to our local businesses, and outside of that, what they've done there on almost no funding really has been great. And I think that rewarding years of hard work and sticking with something, and someone who's very invested in this is worthwhile. So I would really hope that we can assist them however we're able to in building that up, so we can, we can have a good spot in Bridgewater for people to come to.
Thank you.
And as the district counselor, where that is, I'd just like to thank Al Laserta and his group for all the work and the people on this council that have also supported that as well. Looking forward to more.
Thank you. Anything further, councilors? Okay, all those in favor of retaining this at council level, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, that is it for new business. We will now move on to citizen comments. Due to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law requirements, discussions will not take place during public comment periods. If appropriate, responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. Anyone may comment at this time for up to three minutes. Please just state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street. I want to first say thank you for getting going on the charter. I was on the committee five years ago, and we're almost five years, so I'd like to see this getting going, so I'm glad to see some of it's going ahead. The other thing I have a comment on, just we want to comply with the MBTA, we want to comply with the state to get as much money as possible. It's a catch-22. I don't want to lose what we have in Bridgewater for more money. There's got to be a balance, and I just, you know, we just have to be careful. More money doesn't necessarily mean better for Bridgewater as far as our way of life, how things are, density and everything. The state doesn't live here. We do. So we just got to be careful. Yeah, that's great, get all that money, but what's the price? That's why I just want to make sure that we have a good balance. What is the price of getting all that money? And I just want to make sure that that's looked at carefully. But again, thanks for working on the charter finally. Thank you.
Thank you.
James Walsh, 60 Crescent Street. First off, wanted to give a few thanks. Wanted to thank Mr. Casanova Davis for, for highlighting that information on the website. I personally wasn't aware, and it sounds like a really great way to just kind of stay informed. Also wanted to thank you for attaching a lot of documents to the town manager updates. I think that was a really helpful way just to get kind of informed ahead of time and get the most out of, out of the session. I also wanted to thank Mr. Rully for, for explaining a little bit about the, the MBTA overlay. I'll admit, I'm, I'm still confused. My last understanding was, I thought Waterford satisfied MBTA, and then we have the overlay, so I'm just a little confused, and I, I I have a background in urban planning, so I can't imagine explaining this to my aunt or my, you know, my- So I, I think, to Mr. Lindy's point, just having a little bit more background, even just like bullet points of like, here are the things that have happened over the past five years, just to help give some context to that, I, I think would be super, super helpful. And then lastly, I just wanted to follow up. On June 30th, I'd asked a question about Chapter 40B that I don't think has been answered yet. I, I might have missed it in a, in a tape, but I wanted to know specifically how many more housing units we can add to our housing inventory before we're out of compliance with Chapter 40B. Just a quick reminder for that, that's a state requirement, and when we weren't compliant 10 years ago, some housing was built that was able to bypass all of our, our local control. We've been building a lot since, so I imagine we've added quite a bit to that denominator, and I'm just curious what that exact number is that we can build. Why am I concerned? You know, once we, again, once we drop below that 10%, developers can just apply to the state. They don't have to go through us, so a lot of, you know, overruling of zoning, out of any of our control and restrictions. And with some of the changes we've made, you know, we could add hundreds of units to town in the next year. When you look at ADUs, when you look at form-based code, when you look at some of these things, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but I think we should just be mindful that as we add to that denominator, we need to know how, how far we can go before we trip it, right? So I, I just suggest, you know, I think this information is reported to the state, probably exists somewhere. Maybe we will report on it monthly, quarterly, something like that, just so we're tracking and, and we're embracing some smart growth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Al Laserta, Comfort Street. First, I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the fact that you would even take that up and discuss Town River Landing. You know, when we started the, the project out of Town River Landing over three years ago, it was an area that was, was not known as a place that you'd want to go. There were needles everywhere. There were people living in the woods. It was a dumping ground for, for trash for 20 years. And at first, I didn't really think much of it, but then it came to a point where I just couldn't let it go. For some reason, I was fixated on the idea that this was an area that could be cleaned up, an area that the town already had control of, that we could clean up and use for something good. And that's where it started. We started the nonprofit over three years ago. And one of the aspects of the nonprofit is to bring back kind of the social aspects of, of what Bridgewater could be. Maybe what it used to be, but what it could be going forward. Engaging businesses in the town. Figuring out how can we make more things happen in the town? How can we bring events to the town? All the things that people were talking about. You know, natural resources, events, nothing really to do in town. Can we solve that? Can we fix that? And at the same time, can we find a place where we can, the town can control that we can bring in other organizations? The schools, youth organizations, we can hold events for them, we can do fundraisers, we can do all those things. And the answer is yes, we can. It hasn't been easy. It's been, I like to refer to it as my midlife crisis, honestly. I spend more time there, working, digging holes and cleaning up trash than I do at my regular job, which happens to be in the park. I can never get away from the park. I can never get away from it. I work there. When I walk out the door, I'm in the park, and then I see something I need to fix, and I go fix it. That's what this place has become. People ask, what do we get out of it? The satisfaction that we're doing something good, I guess. You know, we've, we've managed to get Bridgewater Television involved, and they've agreed to wire that pavilion to make it one of the most state-of-the-art pavilions that you're going to find anywhere to host events, concerts, whatever, whatever you want, you could do. And we've had a great relationship with the university. I've, I've formed a great relationship with Bridgewater State University, who allows us to use the parking across the street for events. A lot of people thought that that was never going to happen. But it did. And, and it's a good sign, and I just look at this as a, a great step forward, and I really appreciate hearing all of that from you, because I really do think that going forward, this is going to be a huge thing for the town. And it's going to fill a void that I think that we have currently that desperately needs to be filled. So I appreciate it. I can't wait to tell the board about the fact that this happened tonight, that you're even considering it. I think they will feel that it's a rewarding thing, because they all think I'm crazy. My board members think I'm crazy. My attorney thinks I'm crazy. But I'm just dead-set that this is something that we need, and I'm not going to stop until, until it finished being improved, so. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Al.
Good evening, all. Having attended council meetings since the first one, which was in 2011, I do want to say how good it is to see this particular group be aligned with like having sensitivity for wanting more input from the public. Because that always, hasn't always been that way. And so I, I think you guys- and so I, I think you guys are doing a great job and can just continue doing it. Relative to sort of transparency, you know, every time something gets sent to advertising, you always say it's been published in the enterprise. Well, I wonder how many people actually get the Enterprise today or read the Enterprise today? I know I don't, I used to get it, but I don't anymore, and I, so I wanted to just highlight to the Rules and Procedures Committee that there is a pending charter recommendation to update the charter to say that we need to publicize on social media, we need to publicize beyond just local newspaper, so if that can be something you put on your priority list, that would be great, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from the public? Okay, thank you all for, for coming on this summer evening. We'll now move on to council comments. I will start with Counselor Lindy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to thank all the citizens for being here and participating. I agree with you 100% Mr. Ivaldi about the other ways to advertise, and I don't know if there's any way possible to also have those postings on the town website. Just a thought. As far as the cable issue you brought up before, I worked for a cable company for nine years, and then I worked for the nonprofit funded by the cable company for 25 years. Verizon, at one point in time, stopped building communities. They couldn't fulfill their obligations in other communities, and I know that they're not looking to expand. I wish they would because my internet bill and my cable bill and everything, but I think hopefully the town manager can look into that, but I don't think their business plan has changed, unfortunately. I wish it would, I wish we had other choices. You know, I, we have big telco that holds communities hostage, and you look at all the advertising on TV for just cell phones, the last thing in the world that I would ever do is change my cellphone over to Comcast on top of it, because they make mistakes and they just keep raising the rates, but, you know, the other towns, all of those contracts were in existence for a while, and I don't think they've finished building out all of the communities that they actually promised to do that, so just having that background and that experience, and, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments. I know we started the meeting off with appointments, and one of which particularly failed. I, I just want to encourage my fellow counselors that if this is a committee that folks no longer see necessary or that has a direction, that perhaps bringing legislation forward to sunset the committee or change the, the direction of the committee would be more useful, instead of us continually denying folks access to the committee. I just hate to see volunteers who are willing to give their time be turned away, but certainly within everybody's rights, so I'm not arguing that fact, I don't want to criticize anybody for voting one way or the other, I just want to suggest an alternative that may help address the solution as opposed to us keep revisiting that, and I would say the same thing with the resume piece, too. I know the resume thing is something we've asked for, for now, over a year and a half, and we talk about it every time one doesn't come out, but perhaps bringing legislation forward that says it's a requirement or, or something more along those lines, so we can address the problem as opposed to, you know, continually having the same conversation, so those would be my only suggestions, but again, not criticizing anybody or pointing the finger at anybody in, in which way they vote or whatnot, just offering an alternative there. Otherwise, happy to see everything else go forward, and, and thanking Al, and hopefully that CPC money goes through. The job that you've done and your team's done down there is incredible, such an asset and a value to our town, so I would love to see that continue to go, and, and thank you, Counselor Ready, for putting that resolution together, too.
Thank you. Dr. Perry?
Thank you. I echo Counselor Murphy's comments there regarding the appointments. You know, anything I wanted to add tonight, I just wanted to thank Mr. Lacerda for his energy and his passion for the Town Landing project and all the people working with him with Fire Effect. Again, it takes a leader with the passion for a, a project such as that to see it through to fruition, so thank you for your, your work and effort so far, and continue that good work going forward.
Thank you. Counselor Strickles?
Thank you very much. I want to also thank everyone who came out to our meeting tonight and to the Tiff ad hoc meeting that we had last week. It was both well-attended in person and online, and I know myself and the committee greatly appreciated that, and I also really want to extend thanks to the committee for already committing to having the two meetings that we've had and committing to a third next week. I find that that is the exact mission and motivation that we need as a committee to ensure that we're doing the work of the residents, because the residents deserve our best, especially with this. I would also agree with Counselor Murphy on his recommendations and ideas regarding the DEIB committee. I always feel that it's a shame when someone raises their hand and is turned away. We need more volunteers, not less, so we need to figure out a better solution instead of staying on the same hamster wheel and denying people access to volunteerism throughout, throughout our town, simply by our resume or not feeling that a committee is viable at this time. Finally, on a personal note, I just wanted to take a moment to express my condolences to the family of Marie Hunt. She's a resident of Rainham with ties to our community. She was a correctional officer at the Old Colony Correctional Center. Her life was taken a few days ago. Marie and I graduated together in 2006 at BR, and she was a vivacious, kind, and very supportive person. If you knew Marie, you loved her. I've never heard anyone speak poorly about her as a person, and the last few days have definitely been challenging for her, for her family, and most of all, her children, so if you are the praying kind, I just ask that you extend those to her, and if not, just extend warm thoughts to her children and her family at this very, very tragic time. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Allenberg?
Yes, I just want to thank Mr. Lacerda for his wonderful work and for setting a good example for civic engagement. Your leadership is a fine example to us all, thank you. And I just want to compliment my fellow counselor, Mr. Kennedy, for bringing some charter changes, proposing them to our charter. That's all.
Thank you. Counselor Kennedy?
As always, I want to thank the public for coming out, taking the time out of your night to focus on this and offer your opinions, as well as those at home who sent quite a few emails over the last couple of weeks for a number of issues. Your engagement is needed. I echo everything, Al. Thank you so much for the time you put in over Fire Effect. The stamina that it must be taking to, to continue to work on those projects is, is quite a bit, and I would like to see those backed up with some funding, if that funding is available and we can make it happen, so you have a lot of support here, so I, I would love to see that grow. Thank you to the town manager for your report. It included a lot of information that we were all asking for, which we appreciate, and thank you to my fellow counselors for another productive meeting, and I look forward, Counselor Murphy, to trying to work on that, the voting as well. I'd love to collaborate with you on that, so, thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, town manager, for those updates on the websites the residents have been asking, and I think that's even very helpful for me, so I appreciate it. And to the public, I do try to answer all my emails. Sometimes it takes a little bit longer, because I don't want to answer something unless I really know the information, and I kind of dig into that, so I'll get back to you.
Thank you, and for myself, thank you to our town manager for his diligence and his updates. We are addressing citizen comments, I believe, in a very timely manner and providing them with accurate information, so I, I appreciate that. That makes our jobs all a little, a little bit easier to get them the information that they, they asked for. I wanted to thank all of our, our committees and our ad hoc committee. We've been, you know, we've had a very busy summer, and everybody's working very diligently. I wanted to thank my fellow members of the Strategic Planning Committee. I think that we've done so good work there in setting town manager goals, and I also am looking forward to attending the school working group later on this week, and I did have some clarification from our superintendent. I know that it was brought up at our previous meeting. We're going to discuss potentially expanding that, that group or bringing on other counselors, so if you're interested in, in attending, then that meeting is, is Thursday. Sonia, please help me, is it 6:00 PM at the middle school?
Correct, 6:00 PM at the superintendent's office, so in the conference room.
Great. So, that, that will be addressed, and I know that Counselor Murphy brought that up, and we did have a discussion about that last time, and I look forward to continuing to work with that group through not just FY 26, but beyond, beyond that as well. So, that's all that I have for me, other than, again, I'll just reiterate everybody said. Thank you, Al, again, for everything that you do. I'm excited to have this considered, and then we'll, we'll see it again in our next meeting, and folks that want to get involved, reach out to Al. If you go on the Fire for Effect, Inc. website, there's a, there's a support page, and there's a place to click that you want to volunteer, so go ahead and get your hands in the dirt and, and help, help Al if you're, if you're able and willing. That being said, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.